We've had some homework. And if you're looking, just real quick in the front of your book there, under contents, it will take, we will take two weeks to go, actually for us, it's going to be four weeks. You know, you look at that actual calendar timeframe to go through one week session. So we'll have two meetings per week's session in here. And so just give everybody a heads up. That's the pace that we're going to go. There'll be one video, like we will watch the video after we're through today, the preview for next week's video, just to give you a heads up there. So I hope that you had time the last two weeks to catch up. But I just want to start out with the scripture there at the beginning of the week one session. And the scripture says, and if, again, one of the most in-depth, one of the most broad words in the Bible is, in my opinion, the word if. It says, if you belong to Christ, then you are Abraham's descendants, heirs according to the promise. So the promise that the Lord gave to Abraham, you as a Christian, it says, if you belong to Christ, then you are an heir to that promise. You are an heir to that promise. So keep that in mind as we go through. So we're going to pick up on page, well, I don't have the page number, do we? But hit the streets. God's meet up. God's meet up. So He's meeting up with us men is where we're going to pick up at. And just kind of go through a few things there. A lot of questions. And today's session, it's going to be a lot more interactive. And I hope that you will interact. And you know, if you've written down answers, if you've written down questions, please share those and we'll learn and grow together. But the top of the page there, hit the streets. And again, right beside meet up, I put with us men. And that's the whole thing that the scripture is talking about. So the worship of God would define, I scratched through the word there because it's talking about the scriptures there, but our. So the worship of God defines our identity and gives us instructions for how to follow Him. So if you're, if you're truly worshiping God, if you're truly sold out to God, if you're truly living in submission to God, then that is going to define your identity. That is going to give you the instruction on how to follow Him. But so many people, and I say it all the time, and I know I repeat myself, but I cannot help it because I see it day after day after day in the lives of families that call themselves Christians. They call themselves Christians. You know, we say we're, we love the Lord, but we don't follow Him. We say we want the Lord to be a part of our life, but we don't push out the things that are not of God that are in our life. So therefore, God, He's not going to wedge Himself into those areas of your life. He's going to stand at the door and gently knock. And He says, if you open the door, I will come in. So the scripture there says three times, again, we read this scripture last time. Three times a year, all your males are to appear before the Lord God, the God of Israel. For I will drive out nations before you and enlarge your borders and no man shall covet your land when you go up three times a year to appear before the Lord your God. So back in the context, that's Exodus 34. They would go up three times. See, they didn't have Canyon Baptist Church, you know? They didn't have a nice building. But they, so they all traveled to a central location three times to get their direction, to keep their direction, and God would work with them. So the men of God there, the next little section, just, we're just going to pull little bits and pieces and then we'll slow down into questions. So if they were, or if we are to follow His rules and come under His authority, then, and now here's the thing of following Him. And I've got, I set the pens up here. I'm sorry, I meant to hand those out. If anybody needs something to write with, I've got a jar of them up here. So if we are to follow His rules and come under His authority, He is going to bless us. He said, He will bless them, their families and their nation. And then He gives three promises in that scripture out of Exodus 34. Three promises, and that's in bold there, one, two, three. In your books, in the first one, it says, it's a promise. So drive out nations before you. It is a promise of security. It is a promise of security. Now, it is not a promise that everything's going to go perfectly as you would hope that it would. Because if that's the case, then probably most of the men and women that God used in the scriptures would have just took off because it didn't go the way that they thought it would. I mean, I love, and I talk about Peter a lot. Peter had a hard time staying on focus. He had a hard time staying on course because he would tend to look at things as tradition had it, not necessarily as the word of God. So he will drive out nations before you. That is a promise of security. A promise of security. But a lot of times, we put our security in something other than things of God. We put our security in things that are not eternal, like our jobs. You know, we see people, men and women, that lose their job and they lose all hope. All hope is gone simply because they lost their job. Now, is that a bad thing? In most cases, yes, in some cases, no. It's a great thing because then God is pointing you somewhere else. But it's, what it does is it shows a lot of times, our hope is not in the Lord. Our hope is in something else. So a promise of security, and it is God's security. You know, in the funeral service I've done just the other day, you know, healing sometimes is in debt, but there's security in Christ. So a question for you guys. In what ways have you witnessed God bring stability and calm to your life as you follow Him? And I wrote three examples that pertain to my life. But before we get to that, I just want you, I wrote down just a thought. So His peace, the Lord's, His will, the Lord's, brings His peace. When we embrace that, when we, as men of God, when we fall under the authority, under the submission of, or we submission or submit to God, so His peace, His will brings His peace when you truly, truly work and seek Him. So in my life, I've witnessed God bring stability in loss. I've seen God bring stability in love. And I've seen God bring stability in service and through service. But anybody want to share an answer that they may have written down or may have just thought of? Yes, sir?
Well, you know, I got my sister while living with us. And until I started praying for her, let me tell you, since the COVID thing started, it's been hit.
Yes, sir.
And then, I don't know, I finally saw the light some weeks ago and I started praying for her.
Yes, sir.
And things just turned around.
Yeah, and I appreciate that example. I had somebody I was talking to just the other day. And they, they were sharing an issue they were having with an individual. And that is the exact same conclusion that they come to is they said, and it was after, I don't know, one of our studies that we'd done a few weeks back. And they, they said, you know, for the first time, it just dawned on me, I've never prayed for the man. The very person that they were having the very conflict with, he said, I've never prayed for him. And a lot of time, and it's the most, sometimes it's the most simple things that we just overlook. And then God will bless when we realize those things. And sometimes the most simplest things are the greatest things. Anybody else have something for that one there? All right, well, we'll move to the next one. Does stability from God mean that things around you are all stable too? Or also, or is it possible to be stable in an unstable circumstance? It says, explain your answer. And you've often heard me say that many times, God, when you get your focus on God, when you put your loyalty to God, you submit to His authority, most often He does not change your circumstances. What He corrects is your perception of the circumstances. And we see something as, well, it really wasn't that big a deal. Or we see something the opposite, right? That we didn't think was that big a deal. And now God shows you that is a big deal and you need to get rid of it. Or that is a big deal, you need to get away from it. And it's something that we've always blown off as not being a big deal. So again, does stability from God mean that things around you are all stable too? Or is it possible to be stable in an unstable circumstance? Anybody have an answer they'd like to share? Yes, sir?
So my answer was kind of for the first one and this one, kind of tied in together. So as far as what ways you witness God bring stability, it's not so much the stability, I guess you would say, is as far as the, what popped in my head for both these questions was the song, The Anchor Holds.
Yeah.
And I guess the scripture I thought of was the disciples in the middle of the storm. Is He's, He's the anchor regardless of if it's calm or if it's stormy or whether it's bad circumstances or good circumstances, no matter. But He has, He's what's stable. So He bring stability regardless of the circumstance.
Yeah, I love, I love the scripture, you know, saying, God's, you know, the Lord's sitting back there taking a nap. And they're like, what are you thinking? You know, we're about to go under. And He is just at peace because He's in the will of God. He's in the will of the Father. And, and you know, and of course, He gets up at our request and says, peace be still. And yeah, that He is the anchor, no matter what's going on. And a lot of times, you know, we think we're in peace and God points out things that may not be. I think often there's stability in unstable circumstances when we get our focus on Him. So anybody else?
The thing I thought about as far as stable and unstable stability and the circumstances was, you know, stepping out of the boat. When your eyes on Him, you're stable even though everything around you isn't, you know?
Yeah, I mean, He steps out of the boat into the storm. He's got his focus on Christ and then he, then he looks at the circumstances. I mean, and Jesus is answering because He says, you know, call me out. So He goes out, He answered, Jesus answered His little request. And then He, then He looks down and says, oh, I can't do this. Because He took His eyes off of Christ and He began to sink. And I love that at Branson, you know, they're advertising for the next show, there's Signs and Sounds Theater, it's the promise. And it's, there's a Jesus's hand, all you see on the picture is His hand reaching down to another hand that's coming up out of the water. And just that picture says a lot. The picture says a lot, absolutely. So in His will, there is stability in unstable circumstances. Most often, not a change in circumstances. But He will give you stability in those circumstances. So He gives us a promise of security. And I mean, you think about, and the day is coming. I think in my lifetime that I will get arrested for preaching the way that, just for preaching the Bible, I really think that. You can write that down and say, oh, Brother Jason's full of mud. I bet you, if I was a veteran, but I, that day is coming. We have got to get our security in the Lord. I mean, you look at Peter and you look at Paul and Silas and others that got thrown into jail for simply preaching the word of God, for simply preaching about the way. And but they were, they were so secure. I mean, here's Paul sitting in jail and he is preaching or writing a letter to the different churches about peace and about prayer and about encouragement. We have to be secure in the Lord. We have to be secure in the Lord. And I think a lot of times, that's, that's a lot of folks' problem is, is they're not really that secure in their relationship with the Lord. They're not secure. You know, that is, that is what keeps us. And we've probably all done it, if we all raised our hands, I'll go ahead and raise mine. You know, we've done something as simple as, I'm not secure enough to bow my head in front of these other men and that I know don't go to church and pray for my meal. I mean, think about it. So are you secure or you're not? Either, you know, and I've done it. I've been not secure and skipped the prayer. I've done it. And then I've done times and it's like, hey, guys, I'm going to pray. And then sometimes I just don't say nothing and pray. You know, so I've been all over the board with it, but it's really about, you know, but every time I skipped, I fell under conviction. And the Lord says, a little opportunity you just gave away to witness, to show your security in Me. It could be just the littlest things that can make the greatest impact. You never ever know. I remember one time I was some kind of training up somewhere north Ohio, Illinois, somewhere. And I was in a food court in a mall because it was, I'm a tightwad. So I went over to get something cheap real quick and go back to the meat. And I stopped, I was by myself, I stopped, I prayed over my food, you know? And some lady from across the little courtyard walked over and said, thank you. I said, for what? She said, it just does my heart good to see somebody stop and pray. I didn't think anything of it, you know? So here I was at a point, didn't think there was any opportunity to do anything for anybody as far as the Lord's concerned, but impacted somebody. And then there was other times where I knew I could have impacted people and chose not to pray. So we got to be secure. So the number two thing, so He gives us, He'll drive out nations before you. That is from Exodus 34 there. He's going to drive them out. He's going to give you security. The second promise in those scriptures there is He will enlarge your borders. He will enlarge your borders. I never ever wanted to leave Leesville, Louisiana. Did not want to do it. Had no intention, had no desire, but God's taught otherwise. And, and you know, I moved all over the place for almost 10 years. And through that, God began to grow me and prepare me and enlarge my borders. And I promise He will do the same thing. If somebody would pull up, go look at First Chronicles, chapter four, verse 10. Who would like to pull that verse up? I'll get a volunteer. All right, Brother Johnny, why don't you look it up? We'll move a little bit. So it says that the space in which you carry influence and impact, this could be talking about your business. This could be talking about your relationships. This could be talking about civic roles. That is something that I have gotten much more passionate about in the last few years is to get involved civically in my community. Get on boards, get on commissions and, and enlarging our borders is what God's called us to do. This again, it could be talking about your business, your relationship, your civic roles, your ministry. There is always, always an opportunity. Always an opportunity. Many times we overlook it. And sometimes I think we, we over gauge things sometimes. And we think we got to do something glamorous. But sometimes it can be the same, that something as simple is, you know, you shake hands with somebody as you're parting and you, man, I pray you have a blessed day. You know, a lot of times we over, we over emphasize things and we think we got to do something big and glorious, but you don't. I mean, it could be something as simple as, as helping somebody clean up something and you're blessing. So many opportunities. All right, Brother Johnny, you got that one?
4:10.
Yes, sir, First Chronicles 4:10.
The fairness called upon God of Israel, saying, oh, that you would bless me and enlarge my borders and that your hand might be with me and that you would keep me from harm, so that you might not bring harm or bring me pain. And God granted what He has asked.
So Jebus, He said, I want you to enlarge my border. I want you to give me more room, God. But He didn't say, so I can be satisfied, right? He said, so that I can do your work. He says, I want, and then, and then of course, he tied it back into the first one there, you know, the promise of security. But He asked for the Lord to enlarge His border and want it to be an impact for God. He wanted to be, so there's always, 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 I can't say that enough, opportunity for you. So many different ways. And a lot of times, in tragedy is when some of the greatest opportunities there are. You know, many, I mean, you look at the disciples. You look at the Marys. You look at many others that when Jesus was hung on the cross, when Jesus died, when Jesus was buried, all of them who had been told, I'm coming back, they'd been told, all saw that as complete and tragic, not as part of God's plan. And what's crazy at that point, the people that were the most passionate about the promise that He was coming back were the very ones that didn't believe in it. What do you see happening now? The people that are most passionate about stopping the word of God don't believe. And here, many of us are sitting back complacent. Think about it, there's so many similarities to what's going on. But God will enlarge your border, but we need to pray. So if and when you choose to follow Him, your border will grow. But a lot of times, we, sometimes, again, the simpler things, we overlook at the house. We'll overlook at the house. And you know, we start thinking way out there. Churches will do that sometimes too. You know, we get, we get maybe too mission focused, like mission. We think mission, we think far off. And we forget sometimes our mission may be in the shadows of the church. And but enlarging your borders, and sometimes that enlargement is just simply the opportunity. So a question for you. What or why might God extend the influence of those who are faithful to Him? Why might God extend the influence of those who are faithful to Him? Anybody?
I don't think it's a question of might. It's a matter of question of will. Because I think of the scripture of the talents where it talks about the talents. Those, you know, when they were faithful and what He did give them, He gave them more. So to me, it's, it's a matter that He will do. It's because if you're faithful, He's going to bless you, but He does it so that you in turn bless others with what He gave you. So when you take what He did give you and you bless others, well, let's give Him a little more, see if He does a little more.
Absolutely. Again, that border, sometimes, you know, we look at the definition of it. So you know, why might He do these things to carry His word? That's ultimately what it's all about, to carry out and share the truth that God has, the love that God has, the grace that God has to those who are compromised, to those who are compromised. And if you don't believe our nation is compromised, your head is in the sand. Our nation is compromised big time. And it is, you know, I read a statistic this morning, I believe it was, that it is down to about 25% who claim all of this, front to back. About 25%. Now, about 70%, well, you'd say the statistic the other day, that still claim to be a Christian, but I don't believe all this. That's a major contradiction. There's a major compromise there. So the opportunity to work within your borders, wherever they are, is, I don't know that it's ever been any greater. And the, the easiness to impact and to reach out to people has never been easier than it is now. You know, as far as the, at least the opportunity to embrace some of the technology and utilize it. But we have to be careful too. So next question. How could you spread God's goodness and rule in the places where God has given you to impact? How can you spread God's goodness and rule, now His goodness, His rule, in the places where God has given you impact?
It could be your mission field. Tell somebody something.
Yes, sir.
Witness to it. Witness to it.
Right.
Question, the question should be, how could you not?
Yeah.
Also could be too, you know, when you're at work as well. Because what I want to do right now is that I senior boss told my supervisor that there's a mission going on in my organization and he can put you in there with me. So he came back and told Friday, he was all emotional stuff Friday. And he looked at me and he says, I said, well, he's the boss. I said, I'm flexible. It is what it is. And he looked at me and he says, as he wants to do, he says, you're not emotional tonight. And I said, no, it's because of my faith.
Yeah.
That's what he said to me. I said, because of your faith, you're not emotional tonight. I said, it is what it is.
You know, several times in the, in the scriptures, Jesus would point to someone and say, your faith has made you whole. Your faith has made you whole. And we, in our Sunday morning Bible study, we've talked several times about, you know, the lady that had, the Bible describes it as an issue of blood for many years. And she simply touched the hem of the garment that Jesus was wearing. He said, your faith has made you whole. And there's other places in the scripture that describes the same thing. Faith, absolutely.
Well, I'm Christian. You're a professing Christian, then I'm not. Intentional or not intentional, you are witnessing. If someone's looking at you, whether saved or unsaved, you're a living testament of it.
Yep.
Professing and you're not, you're going to answer that.
Right.
Plus you're leading others to life. If you are a Christian, you are saved and it should shine through you. And I shared that, that I'm working on me and getting myself together. I'm so focused on me. And months down the road, I posted a picture on social media driving a Bible. And a guy that worked for me asked me, he said, you're a believer. And I mean, that hit me because I was like, you know, I was trying to make sure I was doing the right things and I was not getting involved in extra curriculars that I shouldn't. He had to ask me. So it wasn't showing through me what it should. And it really opened my eyes.
Yep. Yeah, and I, you know, and I'm sure some of you have had the same thing. You know, some people, you're really surprised when you find out they're a Christian. If someone is really surprised to find out you're a Christian, there's a couple of things that are wrong. You know, right off the bat, you obviously are not living like it. And we've all been there. We've all done it and we've all fallen short there, I assure you. But just, and y'all have already covered some of these things. I wrote down, you know, simple things, a prayer over your meal. Ask someone if you could pray for them. You know, you would be amazed at sometimes people are seeking that, won't ask for it, but they're seeking that. And sometimes you're going to get the answer, no. And that's okay too. But more times than not, the answer's going to be, sure. And some of them, you know, it may just, it may not mean anything to them. But man, you never know what kind of seeds you planted. So you know, ask somebody if you could pray for them. Help someone in an act of kindness or service. And always, always give God the credit. Give God the credit. You know, you see a few athletes, you know, they'll make enough score or whatever and they'll give God the credit. And, you know, and I hope their lives are following it and hope ours are too. You know, so, so we have to think about that. Does our life follow our words? Does our words follow our life? Some things to think about there too. But always give God the credit. Anything else on that one? Enlarging your borders? All right, the third promise that we get out of Exodus 34 there, it is, it says, He will allow no man to covet your land. When I first read that, I'm thinking, you know, for them, it was more about their physical land. But then you look at the spiritual application of that for us today. Because we're not in the same circumstance as God defined. Of course, there is still a major battle over God's defined land physically. Been some battles with administrations over that. But He says, He'll allow no man to covet your land. You can trust God with all that He has entrusted to you. So you can trust God, whatever you've given God to secure. You can have faith and trust. He's going to secure it. But the thing is, what you've kept from Him though, is in great danger. See, a lot of times, we, we give God some things, but then we hold other things back. Like, you know, well, I don't need to get into specifics. Y'all can give me some specifics if you have them. But what you've given God to secure, what you've given to God is secure, period. If you have absolutely given your marriage to God, all of it. Given your job, your abilities to God, all of it is secure. It is secure. He is going to not allow anyone to take something from you that you have absolutely given to God. But we have to think, what have we kept from God? So describe, question for you to think about. Describe a time when you lost something you worked hard to achieve or acquire and had. worked hard to achieve or acquire and how that loss impacted your view of life?
Well, for me, uh, something that I worked hard to achieve was, uh, the title of driller in the oilfield. And then in a matter of no time, bumped back to Derrick's and then after that, completely laid off. So completely lost the job. As far as the way that it impacted my view of life, at that point in time in my life, it was all about the money. It was all about the material. And through that, God showed me that it's, that's, the things of this earth is something that, as scripture says, here today, it's gone tomorrow, just like we are. And so my view of life shifted from what it shouldn't have been back to what it should have been.
Right.
So.
Yep, money can't buy it. Love ain't the only thing that can't buy it, right? It can't buy peace, it can't bring happiness. You know, again, one of the things I shared a little bit while ago was, I mean, I, I, I did not wanna leave and God took that away from me, you know? And for almost 10 years, I stayed gone and somebody told me early on, says, sometimes you gotta go further to get closer. Sometimes you gotta go further to get closer and, you know, and I had to leave and, and to get closer, I had to go further. The Lord moved me in order to grow me and prepare me. If I'd have stayed home, I'd have never pastored a church. If I'd have stayed home, I'd have never been in the ministry. And, and God moved me and grew me. Then he moved me again and he grew me. Then he moved me again and he grew me. Then he moved me again and he grew me. Then he moved me again. I never wanted any of that. I didn't want all that movement and, but God had a plan, but, and then man, has he impacted my life, has he impacted our life, uh, my family's life and? Anything, anybody else, any examples you wanna share? Okay. Next thing, why is it important to rest in the truth of God's sovereign protection with regard to what he has given you? You know, so maybe somebody threatens your job if you don't compromise. And I mean, we see that there's, that, that's how we've got half the laws of land is, is people, one people, one group would threaten the other group with something and then they would compromise and then, you know, but do we, do we compromise our faith? That's what we really need to think about. There's some areas, you know, we could compromise in, but faith in God, truths of the word, there is zero room, zero slack, none for, for compromising. But what, why is it important to rest in the truth of God's sovereign protection with regard to what he has given you? And the second part, what is a consequence for those who do not rest in God's protection? So what?
To accept him, you gotta have that faith.
Yes, sir.
That's your protection.
If we truly accept him, absolutely. That's it, going back to that number one there, he promises us security. See, that, why is it, really, why is it important? Because he's called us to rest in him. He's called us to, to have peace in him. But a lot of times, again, we get to dependent on other things. We put our security in other things and we, we don't have that peace. We're not resting in his truth. I mean, i- if, if, if your job swings your emotions all over the place, whether you have one or don't have one, or, again, we're putting our, we're putting our, our, our rest in, in something else. We're putting our peace in something else. So to love him, and, and we, we talked about this one the other day, to love him is to follow him and to give him all of it. And, and again, it goes back to the part we, we said a minute ago, what you've given to God is secure, what you've kept from God is in great danger, is in great danger. And, uh, I'm, I'm sure we could, we think of some things. So, uh, what is the consequence? There's absolutely no hope away from the Lord. There is absolutely no hope away from the Lord. And, uh, what happens there is only danger and loss, only danger and loss. Anybody got anything wanna add to that one? All right, we're gonna move over now to page 18. Uh, jump or be jumped? Pull a few things out of that, so, talks about a game of checkers. So you'll notice that the top of each piece is the insignia of a crown. That is because each checker was created to become a king. A checker is crowned because or when? It has successfully made it to the other side. But see, what is, so, so what does the Lord say, we're gonna do with our crowns? We're gonna lay on his feet. And, and the group casting crowns, uh, that is, that is the meaning of the name of their group, is they're gonna cast their crowns before the feet of God. So some similarities there. So whether a checker achieves its creative, its creative goal of being crowned as king is fully determined by the moves made by the hand controlling it. So, you know, you, you think about what hand is controlling you? Is it, as Brother Corey shared, money? Is that what's got his hand on you, guiding you around? What, what may be something that's guiding you? So when God created men, he created them with a crown to rule under the authority of God. So you can never be over until you're willing to be under. So, so you're not gonna have what God would have you to have until you are submissive to him. You're never gonna be over until you're, uh, prepared to be under. So when God created men, he created them with a crown to rule under the authority of God. Ever since the first man, Adam, Satan sought to jump men to keep them from fulfilling their kingdom purposes. He goes to great lengths to keep us from functioning in alignment with God, so that our families, our churches, our communities and nation experience the consequences of confusion of men living independently of God. That is the epitome of what's going on in our nation right now. We're wanting to live independently away from, out from, under the rule of God. And, and when you get out from under, when you get away from absolute truth, there's no boundaries. Everything is fluid, everything is just relevant, nothing is based on absolute truth. So we are absolutely right now, said at the beginning, absolutely unashamedly under attack a- as men of God, as Christians, period, but as men of God, we are absolutely under attack. And, and Satan is trying to get you to sit down and be quiet. That is not what God has called us to do. We are absolutely under attack. So a few scriptures there that, that ask us to read, says, be, be a sober spirit, a lot of places to go with that one. Be on the alert, your adversary, the devil prowls around like a roaring lion, seeking who, seeking someone to devour, but resist him. Firm in your faith, knowing that the same experiences of suffering are being accomplished by your brethren who are in the world. So a lion by nature is, I mean, almost every picture you see of a lion, he just laid back. They're, they're relatively lazy. And, and they're gonna wait till, till one gets out of the herd, right? Then they're gonna go after that animal. They're gonna go after that, that weak one. And, and that, that's what it's talking about, your adversary, the devil, he just prowls around like a roaring lion. He's just waiting for you to think you've got it all together outside of God. And he is going to grab a hold and begin, that's that, that, that hand that guides you, right? That's what's gonna happen. So what are you doing to live in and stand on God's will? Think about that. What are you doing to live in and stand on God's will? And, and the second part really of that question is what are you not doing? What are you not doing that God has called you to do? So the scripture says to be sober, to be alert, to be sober, be alert. And that's talking spiritually, um, but they're, uh, that, that just as well could be talking physically too. And Ephesians 4:26, 27 says, be, be angry, but yet not, not sin, don't sin. So there are things that we need to be angry about, but this is yet to not sin. Says, do not let the sun go down on your anger and be, uh, and do not give the devil an opportunity. When we, when we get so mad, it just engulfs everything about us. We go to bed mad, we wake up mad. You are opening the door wide open, said, come on in devil and hang out with me. Come on. And, and we get to thinking we're brave and all this, cause we get mad and it's most of the time, unrighteous anger, many times. And, uh, we mess around and, and we, we, we let it lead us to sin. So a question for you, page at the bottom of 18 there, what are some ways we can resist Satan's attempt to jump us? What are some ways? Somebody got an example?
For a class like this?
Absolutely. Get in the word of God, study and then, and then let it, expose yourself to God, let it affect you. Somebody else? So we gotta get focused and we gotta stay focused on Christ. We gotta get focused and then we gotta stay focused. It's a lot of time, you know, you take somebody that's, uh, bipolar and, and they get to take it in medicine and, and then they think, well, I'm good, so they quit. And, and, and then the next thing you know, they lose their focus. And, and the same thing, you know, we get, we get to rolling with God and God gets to blessing us and, and then we think, oh, I got it. And we miss a Sunday, then we miss a Sunday night, then we miss a Wednesday, then we miss two Sundays. And the next thing you know, oh, doggone, how did he realize it was Wednesday night? I mean, the old Satan, he will, he has a platter, just laid it out and, and says, I got something for you to do today, what you want? And he'll, he'll do it every time. We, we gotta get focused on Lord, you gotta stay focused. There's no downtime in Christianity. There's no part-time Christianity. It's either all the time or it ain't none of the time, because we're opening that door to the devil. We gotta get focused, we gotta be focused, we gotta stay focused, we gotta be intentional. We got to be intentional.
Like you used to say, less of me, more him.
That's it. John chapter three, verse 30, more him. Only way there's gonna be more him is less of me. That's the only way. So next question here for the group, why do you think God allows Satan to prowl like a roaring lion, seeking men to devour?
Maybe it's our test?
Sir?
Maybe it's our test?
Check on our faith.
Well, that's, that's what the verse I'm fixing to look up kinda talks about. Uh, so I, the scripture I thought of when I, when I read that question was Matthew chapter 13, you don't have to go there, I'll, I'll go and read it to you, but Matthew 13, 24 through 30, i- if you're writing stuff down. And, uh, verse 23 says, but he that received into the ground is he? Wait, let me start over. But he that received seed into the ground, in the good ground, is he that heard the word and understand it, which also bearth fruit and bringeth forth some a hundredfold, some sixty, some thirty. So have you truly, truly received him? First thing to think about. Another parable he put forth unto them, saying, the kingdom of heaven is likened unto a man and sowed good seed in his field, but while he sowed, his enemy, old Satan slips in, came in and sowed tares among the wheat and went his way. But when the blade was sprung up and brought forth fruit, the blade ain't bringing the growth, then appeared the tares also. So the servants of the household came and said unto him, sir, didst thou, didst not thou sow good seed in the field? From whence then hath it tares? How did the tares get there? How did the weeds get there? He said unto them, an enemy has done this. The servants said unto him, wilt thou then that we go and gather them up? But he said nay, or no, lest while you gather up the tares, you'll root up, you'll root up also the wheat with them. Let both grow together until the harvest and in the time of harvest, going towards the judgment there, I will say to the reapers, gather you together first the tares and bind them in a bundle, so burn them, but gather the wheat into my barn. And, and then, so, so he begins to, to separate out what doesn't need to be there. You think of, of how they used to, uh, separate, get the chaff or chafe out of the wheat, they would throw it in the air and, and, in, in a crosswind to get all the light stuff out of there. And you have only what is left that is good. Everything else is gone. So God sometimes, you know, he, he lets Satan seek who may devour to, to help separate things out and to get the good out from the bad, the bad out from the good, you know? But, but are you prepared? But are you ready? Because he's gonna come. He's gonna come in your house, he gonna slip in this church, he's gonna, he's gonna try to wedge into your relationships, he's gonna get you fired up at work about something. We, we have to be ready, we have to be ready. So the next thing, describe your, in your own words, what it means to live with a sober spirit and always on the alert for Satan's schemes. And, and I just read a note, says, if you're allowing anything to stay in your life that isn't of him, then you'll not be alert and you'll not be sober. And, and maybe that's physically for some. I mean, and I preached about it a couple Sundays ago, you know, what we're, things that we're opening the door to and allowing to be in our life, we're allowing it to be in our life willingly, that we know there's no heavenly good in it, yet we're allowing it to stay in our life and, and we, we can't be alert and sober. And, and I'm not just, I mean, I am referring some to alcohol, but, but I'm talking about so much more than that, so much more than that. And, and I mean, it, it may be something, it may be this, it, it may be some, I was talking to somebody else, they said, man, I had to delete this off, this app off my phone and this app off my phone and this app off my phone, because every time I got still, that's all I did, that's all I did. And, and I mean, you can go to most, any restaurant now and look at a family, mom's on her phone, dad's on her phone, little girl's on her phone, boy's on his phone, ain't nobody talking. Nobody's on the work and nobody's sober, speaking, you know, physically about, I mean, and, and nobody's on the work. And, and you think, oh, devil ain't gonna slip in on here? He, he's all up in here. I mean, all in there, we, we have to be alert, we have to be ready. So it is in these times of testing, and, and Harold is absolutely, that, that's, it's all about testing. That's what the, the devil just be seeking around and, and the Lord is allowing things to happen to, to help test us. So in these times of testing, then our true character is either formed or revealed. You know, you never know your weak points until you go into a battle. You know, just think of any sport, you can practice, you know, football teams. When I played football, we practiced all summer and then there towards the end, we had two-a-days. So we practiced, well, we ate, we practiced, we ate, we practiced, we ate, we slept. And then the next day, we repeat. And, uh, but until we faced an opponent, we didn't know how much good we did. So when we go out, I mean, our opponent's out there, our opponent shouldn't be in here, but, but sometimes, uh, we, we bring it in on our shoulder, but it'll, it'll, it'll test what, what our true character is. So the strength that we need to successfully do battle with, the devil is supplied by God, so that the strength we need to successfully do battle with the devil is supplied by God. He is going to supply what we need, Ephesians chapter six and, and verse 10 and 11. And if you go look at all, uh, the other verses around that, it's talking about the armor, putting on the full armor of God and are you battle ready? Do you have your shield? Do you have your helmet? Do you have your belt? Do you have your feet shod? You know, do, all these things that the Bible describes is, is all of our battle-ready armor. And, and that may seem obvious, but judge it from the way we treat the truth, it bears repeating, right? So it's got a little quiz there for you. Says, mark your own perspective of Satan on the chart where one means you overestimate him and 10 means you underestimate him. I'd say a little above average, I underestimate him. I don't know about you, but that's where I, I fell in there, just a little above average that I probably underestimate old Satan. Why is it critical to have a healthy understanding of Satan's strategies and strengths in order to defeat him? You, you need to be able to recognize him. But the thing is, if, if you don't know the truth, if you don't know the word of God, then, then old devil's gonna slip in there with a scripture on his shirt and come right up in the middle of your life. And, and we have scripture on his shirt, he must not be too bad. Harold's got one on his shirt, but, uh, you know, he, he slips right in there. He looks normal, he looks friendly, I mean, the devil, I'm telling, he ain't got I mean, the devil, I'm telling you, he ain't got horns and a pitchfork and a red face and a dark suit on. That's what he looks like in the movies. That is not what Satan looks like, I promise you. I don't know what he looks like, but it ain't that. It ain't obvious. It ain't obvious. We need to know the word of God. We need to know the truth to recognize what is not. So how should your, how should your understanding of Satan and his goals affect your decisions? You gotta, you gotta keep your eyes on Christ and it's gonna influence your decision, make it for sure. That last little part there says, the inability, the inability to wage ongoing spiritual warfare over the enemy has kept too many men in a cycle of defeat, discouragement, confusion, rebellion, and addiction, just to name a few, just to name a few. I was visiting with a friend of mine, just, it's been a couple months ago. Met him on a job and, you know, we hit it off friendship. We've always stayed in touch. And man, just seemed like a jam of men of God. And just recently, almost, almost lost his marriage of twenty-something years because he was addicted to pornography. And that led him to not being satisfied at home. That led him to looking elsewhere. And thankfully, he finally allowed God to intervene and save his relationship. But, but man, he was not battle-ready. He had laid most of the armor to the side, carried it around, but didn't do anything with it. That's like coming to church, but never letting God impact your life. You're not battle-ready. All kinds of things, all kinds of ways that the old devil will slip in. A few things there on the next page, page twenty, says, as a result, as a result, we face spiritual, social, racial, my heavens, are they trying to stir racial divide in our country? It is so rampant. It is so pitiful, but that is what they're using now. They're trying, whether it's black and white, whether it's some other nationality, some other ethnicity, whatever, they are trying to get an uproar of racism when it ain't there. Now, sure, there is some, but not to the magnitude that we're trying to make things. So you've got this, these spiritual things, social things, racial things, political chaos. But we, I don't know that, I don't ever remember so much political chaos. I'm sure some of you probably do. But we're experiencing it today. Too many men have become either neutered and domesticated or abusive and irresponsible, creating a society that is torn, tattered, and in utter dysfunction. Now, this was written fairly recently, obviously. But yet despite all we see around us, there remains hope. Don't lose hope. Again, we look back. I mean, God said, he said, man, more people's gonna choose hell. God said it. It's in the word of God. We should not be surprised when more people seem to be choosing that path. But are we doing anything to try to prevent others from going down that path? What are we doing? So if God can get his men to rise up as the kingdom men he's created us to be, men who pursue him, man, he could do awesome, wonderful things to us. It's time for God's men, under the lordship of Jesus Christ, to change. It describes some other things in there, but just to change. We, as, as men of God, have got to change. So a question there, God's kingdom agenda is the visible manifestation, people can see it, of the comprehensive rule of God over every area of your life. And it says, you can rephrase it however you want. What I put, live in him out loud unashamedly. Whether you are on the job, whether you're at home, whether you, wherever, whatever the situation may be. Live in him out loud. That's where it's gotta start. Give an example of submitting yourself to Christ and his kingdom agenda. So we gotta submit to learning his word. Like Harold talked about a minute ago. We've gotta submit to learning his word and not just learning it. Then we've gotta submit to living it out. You know, we talked about some of the talents and, you know, God, or the master there representing the Lord, gave different ones, different amounts of money. Some of them just took the little amount and just hid it. Many of us are like that with our spiritual life. We get it, we just hide it. We don't wanna do anything with it. We don't want anybody to know. We just hide it. That is not what God's called you to do. That is not. He's called us to live it out loud. We gotta submit to learn the word. We gotta submit to living out what you learned. How might your submission enable you to defeat the enemy's plan in your life? I'd like to hear a few examples if you guys have them there. How might your submission enable you to defeat the enemy's plans in your life?
Well, I refer that back to the whole checkered game. And I would put it as, we're no longer moving the pieces. We letting him move the pieces.
It's gotta be, I mean, we're getting ready to, you know, pursue a job and it's, all right, Lord, I've got some opportunities here. Which, which is one that you want me to have? You know, different ways, yeah, who's moving the pieces? Are we, are we actually under submission of God? Are we submitted to him? But seeing things through his eyes allows us and enables us to see things his way. We look at things through the scriptures, but we cannot go wrong. Why is it important for a society to have a shared set of values and standards passed down from one generation to another? I hear families and it breaks my heart. I hear families say, well, I don't wanna push it on them. I don't wanna, have you asked them to come to church? No, I don't wanna push it on them. I'm afraid I may run them off. To where? I mean, but that's how we look at it. And then I hear the other end of the spectrum and some people start putting the blame of their heathen kids on themselves and say, well, I guess I pushed them too hard now. I made them go to church too much. That is crazy. That is, but the old devil, man, will get us to thinking all kinds of stuff. Now, you know, there is abusing things and overdoing things. Don't get me wrong there. But, you know, we gotta, we gotta stay tied to the truth. Scripture there at the top of page twenty-one. In those days, there was no king in Israel and every man did what was right in his own eyes. Does that not look like it's becoming full circle? And when you erase, when you try to erase what was done in the past, it is absolutely inevitable it's gonna happen again. When we can't learn from our mistakes, that's why I like the book of Psalms and Proverbs, particularly Proverbs. Solomon wrote about a lot of his mistakes so that we can learn from his mistakes, so that we can learn from his mistakes. So what happens to a culture when values are left up to everyone's interpretation, which is where we are right now? It's just, I just identify as whatever. I mean, they, it's like alphabet soup now, L, G, B, T, Q, I, A. I mean, it's, they actually labeled it. Now proudly labeled themselves as the alphabet mafia. That's ridiculous. We're proudly glorifying no absolute truth. All things are fluid. And when you get off the word of God, anything goes. And buddy, we're seeing that epitome of it today. And it's being glorified. For you to stand and say, I'm straight and I'm a Christian, you're being looked at as an extremist now. I'm just, I'm just telling you, that ain't, that ain't straight. You know, used to, that, you know, maybe I'm over exaggerating a little bit. I'm not, I'm not. So what happens when a culture, to a culture when, when values are left up to everyone's interpretation? There's absolutely no absolute truth anymore. It is a complete moving target all the time. Have you seen this happen in today's contemporary culture? That should be an overwhelming, absolutely yes.
Well, I mean, they use two phrases. They went from, used to be YOLO, you only live once, you know? And now it's do you is what they say, whatever that may be.
Yep. Today, and it's gonna change tomorrow. And it's crazy. We want, they want to close this. You know, we watch movies about this being under attack and them trying to get them. And it's been done in the past, you know, where they gathered up all the bibles and burned them. And let's see, the word of God says, that don't matter. It's still gonna be here. It's still gonna last. So what, how has this kind of individualism, do you, as Brother Corey said, what, how has this kind of individualism damaged the spread of God's kingdom? Anybody? Has it damaged the spread of God's kingdom? What I wrote is the word, the word has been adulterated. The word has been adulterated. I mean, why do you think there's, I don't know, a hundred-plus versions of this now? I mean, get in there and change it, twist it. I mean, there's, there's, there even, I forget who it was that's published it, but a gender-neutral Bible. And another one that has given humanness to animals, the animals are hits. Now they've got a Bible that doesn't offend the animals. I mean, it is being adulterated. And when we don't know the word of God, when we don't stick in it, study it, let it change us and then, and then, you know, let the Lord use us to change others, the word becomes adulterated and we're not doing it any good anymore. So let's list one practical thing you can do this week in your sphere or your area of influence in order to guide others towards God, toward God's set standards. Set, they didn't change. Never have, ever will. Be creative. Says, this could mean in your family, at work, at church, on social media, also in your prayer time. Listen, what's one thing you can do? Anybody?
I might be doing something. I just say, praise the Lord.
Yeah. Little things. We never know, you know, how that may impact. The one thing I wrote is don't compromise. Don't compromise. Absolutely. Under no circumstance, don't compromise. You know, and I've said it many times and I've seen it more times than not, tear families apart. Maybe not physically, but spiritually, sports. I mean, the devil loves sports and used to. Absolutely. There was no practice. There was no game on Wednesday or Sunday, period. Guess when they're all playing now. We're gonna practice on Wednesday so we can play on Sunday. And in and of itself, it's healthy. In and of itself, it's family-oriented, but it's pulled people away from the Lord because we get complacent. Don't compromise. Don't compromise. But again, it's like, and Chris said it a long time ago in one of our Sunday morning Bible study classes. You know, the awesome thing about the Lord is no matter how far you've walked that way, all you got to turn around. All you gotta do is turn around and God's right there, right there, just waiting for you to come back, for you to get things back together. So that prayer at the end there, I encourage you, I'm gonna read it to you, but I encourage you, really read that and really spend some time thinking about that. It says, pray about one area in your life where you need to step up your game against Satan's schemes. Look for what the Bible calls opportunities or open doors that Satan is using to break into your life. Ask God how you can close these doors to the enemy. Also spend some time in prayer asking for God's wisdom regarding his standard for society, his standard for families, and his standard for your individual life. Ask him to reveal where your standards are not up to par with his own so that you can adjust and be in alignment with God's will. Let's see, too many of us want to adjust and get God in alignment with our will when we say things like, well, but I'm not hurting anybody. But I'm not. But I mean, we go to making those excuses. So I really want you to read that and spend some serious time considering what is in that last box right there. So we're gonna, we're gonna stop right there. I was hoping we'd get a little, a little bit further, but I don't wanna run through that next part. So go ahead and study up from page twenty-two. And I'm gonna go ahead and ask if you would go ahead and begin week two. We will get through that next part where it says Bible study two, which is actually part of week one. We'll finish that up our next time together and we will, we will hit the introduction of the next week's study. Two Wednesdays, or two Thursdays from now. So if you would, go ahead and study up and be ready for getting through page thirty-one. And that's what I want you guys to be prepared that we'll go over next time we come together. So any, any final thoughts or comments?
I see over there a couple pages. It starts back over, study one again?
Well, there's two sections in study in week one, and we didn't quite make it through the second one. So you guys will pick up on page twenty-six. And go through, I'm sorry, you're gonna pick up on page twenty-two.
And go back forward.
And go through page thirty-one. Page thirty-one. And that's, that's what we'll cover when we come back, two Wednesdays from now. So any last thoughts or comments? All right, let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord. Thank you again for these men, Lord. I just pray, Lord, first, I pray a burden, Lord, upon us, a burden that is from you, Lord, a burden that we will recognize. Lord, I pray for your conviction to push us, to drive us, Lord, to be, Lord, submitted under your authority, Lord, with everything in our lives. Lord, thank you for these men. I pray just a special blessing upon them, upon their families, Lord. I pray a special blessing upon the influence, Lord, of their, their area of influence. Lord, I pray that you will bless us, strengthen us, Lord, that we will always honor you, lift you up, Lord, and glorify your name, Lord. We just thank you, Lord, for your love and mercy, for your grace, Lord. Lord, may we learn everything that you would have us to learn in this, Lord. May we apply it to our lives, Lord. May it grow to be wisdom of you. Lord, we thank you and we love you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.